...in having a New England town meeting. From what I understand, this is a fairly unique way of doing things where you get the correct monitors. If you notice, there's not a lot of natural light in here. The windows are all out being restored, so hopefully they'll come back to give us light. Colonel Willington, notice and warnings, special town meeting. The electors of the town of Willington and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting on the matters mentioned in the following warning, are hereby warned and notified to meet the town meeting at the Old Town Hall, 11 Common Road, Willington, at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, for the following purpose. Item one, Willington electors to nominate and vote to fill a vacancy on the Region 19 Board of Education. Registered voters attending shall pass the certified paper ballot on the nominated names. Name is Willington, this third day of March 2025, the Willington Board of Selecting, Peter Snodgrass and Matt Clark. Do I hear nominations for a moderator? See?
No.
Second?
Second.
I'm nominating Erica Wazinski.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none or closing nominations, all those in favor of Andy Marco, please say aye.
Aye.
All those for Erica, please say ayes.
Aye.
Okay. Let's have a brief raising of hands, because section seems a little bit more... Yes. All those ready? Marco, please raise your hand. Okay, all those for Erica, please raise your hand. Alright, it's 30, it's 25 over 40, so Erica. What, so you have a candidate?
Uh-huh. Yes, I think so. Alright. With that objection, I'll suspend from reading the call, we read the call and the objections. Alright. Item one, Willington electors to nominate and vote to fill a vacancy on the Region 19 Board of Education. Registered voters attending shall pass a certified paper ballot on the nominated names. With that, I'll just go over a couple of things. The acoustics in here are not the best. Alright, so we are trying to capture video, so I'll ask you to keep the noise in the crowd down. The camera will pick it up and may not pick up the speakers. Alright? So we are here to nominate and vote to fill vacancy at Region 19 Board of Education. I will note that the vacancy is until the next regular municipal election, which is in November. The term that's available, and I'll consult our town clerk to provide comments, is the end of a term, is that correct? Okay. So this vote, regardless of the length of term that was left, is only until November. And then anyone would have to run a municipal election to go, just so you all have information. I will ask first our major parties if they have any nominations.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dr. Christian, Vice Chair of the Willington Republican Town Committee, and standing Region 19 Board of Education member. My pleasure, on behalf of the Willington Republican Town Committee, to nominate today Saint Peter Matt Landry as a Willington representative on the Region 19 Board of Education.
Any nominations for the Democratic Town Meeting?
Good evening, I'm John Teehan, 26 Eldridge Mills Road. Proud to serve, Chair of the Willington Democratic Town Committee. I rise tonight to ask the voters to consider Julie Marshall for this position on the Region 19 Board of Education. Between her direct experience as a teacher and her undergraduate and graduate degrees in the field, Julie is eminently qualified for this position. She ran for the Willington Board of Education in the last municipal election in 2023, where she showed that she has the vision and ability to serve in this critically important post. While the voters did not see fit to elect her in that race, tonight, we all have an opportunity to correct that error. It's worth noting that the secret contestant tonight was vacated by a long-serving Democrat, Robert Doe. Bob has moved to New Hampshire to be closer to his daughter and her family during his golden years. I hope the voters here tonight will join me in wishing Bob luck. On behalf of the Willington Democratic Town Committee, and with the unanimous vote of our nominating committee, I hereby nominate Julie Marshall to be our next member of the Region 19 Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? For once, or twice? Seeing none, I will first offer the candidates and nominees an opportunity to speak, and then I will allow anyone in the audience to speak. So I ask that you raise your hand, and just be patient while we get to anyone who wants to speak and ask questions. Alright, with your answer.
Hey, good evening, everyone, my name is Matt Landry. I've lived in town, Willington, now for almost three years, and I'm honored to be running for position on our E.O. Smith Region 19 School Board. I have two children in the school system, one at home and another at center. As a US Navy veteran and an experienced manager, I know what it means to lead, to adapt, and to make tough decisions that impact the future. In the military, I've learned the value of discipline, teamwork, and accountability, qualities that are essential in ensuring our schools are effectively and efficiently. As a manager, I've worked to bring people together, solve problems, and create environments for individuals to thrive. Now I want to bring that same dedication and leadership to our schools. Our students deserve an education that prepares them for success, whether in college, the workforce, or service to our country. Our teachers deserve the support and the resources they need to do their jobs effectively. And our parents deserve transparency and a voice in their children's education. I'm running because I believe in strong schools, strong communities, and strong leadership. This isn't about politics, it's about kids, our kids. It's about making sure they have the tools they need to succeed. And if you believe in putting students first, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Hi, everybody. Julie Marshall, I am running because I would like to be able to help represent Willington. Um, I feel like there's people behind me, I'm sorry. I am an educator, I have dedicated my entire career to working at schools, working with families, working with students. I work in public school right now, in the Special Education Department, working with families and students, working on parent coaching individually with the children, and making sure that all of the children in the school I work at are able to access the curriculum in a way that works best for them. I would like to do the same thing for Willington and all of the students who are at E.O. Smith, especially as they're one of the smaller districts that goes to Willington, to make sure that all of you feel that your voices are heard and that your concerns are... Oh, I didn't know what I was just gonna say at the last, sorry. Make sure that your concerns are taken care of, and that you feel that there is someone in your corner who is making sure that you and your students have the best education they can possibly have in a way that offers them the opportunities that they deserve. I am not a big, like, right-speech type person, but I will tell you that I currently work in a school right now, and I also work for a home-based early intervention where I manage a number of people underneath me as a manager, as the Associate Vice President for the company. So I am very well-equipped in helping to listen to people and make sure that they feel heard. I also serve currently on the Board of Directors for a nationwide nonprofit, and I am the Governor's Chair for the Governor's Committee for that. So I also understand what for tenure is like and what will be asked of me, and I'm ready to serve and do my best in that role. Thank you.
Alright, and I will open the floor, I ask you to raise your hand, identify yourself by name for the record, and to keep the sound before. Ms. Sepulvedon?
Lori Sepulvedon, Turnpike Road. I would like to ask both candidates what their view is on the federal government trying to shut down the Department of Education, and how that's going to affect E.O. Smith.
Alright. If it doesn't matter to me, I will give our fill of energy.
I want to go?
You want to go?
Okay, I can go first.
You might as well remain seated and wait for questions.
I think we're in a little bit of an upheaval right now, where we don't actually know what's going to happen, and that's terrifying. That's terrifying for our students, it's terrifying for the families, and it's terrifying for the town financially, because we don't know how that's going to pan out. I think it would be unfair to say that I knew exactly what was going to happen, but I'm hoping that it will not affect our, and our students in a detrimental way, and whatever ends up happening with the laws in mind.
Education should be managed by the state anyways. It shouldn't be a federal program. It should be tailored to your specific community, your specific state, your specific needs. That's all I think.
Sorry, just moving. Ms. Sepulvedon? You might want to stand up.
Judy Green, 19 Bridge Middle Lane. So, your position that education can be a state-run situation, do you have a concept of how the lack of federal funding would impact the schools? Because this town is into this kind of heat. So, can you just speak to that?
The states have their policies in place as it is. As far as one type of education for everyone across the country, it doesn't really fit, in my opinion.
Asking about the kind of funding, if they have federal funds, how would the school fund sustained the programs that they already have in place that are based on federal funding? There's a funding question, not that everybody's got the same education.
Right.
Alright, hold on, I saw a little hand. Raise your hand high, Caroline.
Brian Sepulvedon, 271 Turnpike. This is a question from the Republican candidate. Do you have any education experience? Do you understand anything about how the school systems work and how they're funded?
I have a lot of budget experience throughout my years. I've done a lot of direct negotiations, being in the union, with teachers with different companies.
So that sounds like no.
As far as direct educational experience, I've never taught. I've taught kids how to play hockey ball with their time.
I'm sorry, but education is not a business. It's not something that we manage like we manage the hockey team. It's much, much, much more complicated than your average four-person small business.
Hey, Tal, 11th Road, Willington. So Julie, you said your Assistant Vice President of Treatment?
Assistant Vice President of Treatment, yes.
Okay, so you're overall in charge of treatment, and everything comes to your door as far as failure or success, correct?
In my region, yes, kind of.
Okay. So doing some research on both of you, there's very little on Google about you, which is probably a good thing, but there is Google reviews of your business. And your business gets a 1.8 star out of eight reviews, and five one-star reviews, and the reviews are very troubling about treatment, which falls on you.
Yeah.
How can you sit here and tell people that you're going to be able to have solid guidance to kids that need help when your company, under your leadership, your executive team, has a 1.8 reviews, like one-star reviews?
Well, I think first we can all agree that Google reviews are nonsense. I will say that my success in my company and in my role is in the children, millions of them, thousands of them, that are having success talking when they weren't able to, they have living skills when they weren't able to. And right now, my specific knowledge of our Google reviews, I will admit, is quite low because I don't read them. They're not valid or accurate.
And just follow-up on that, last door also says 71% of people, and I think it was around 18 people that did the survey, 71% would never use your company again. Again, very executive.
So as far as surveys, though, the only people who tell us surveys are those that have a very strong opinion one way or the other. They're also a very inaccurate way of giving any information.
You're up to that opinion.
It's actually research-based and science-based. Do you have another question for me, or are you done?
No, I shared your failure.
Daniel Mack, 27, Harris Park. There's no saying you just put those reviews up, you and whoever, you by yourself, there's not, there's no experience in saying this is from this person, that they're actually badly qualified. You're going to stand there and say that he's an anonymous review, or be a part, and then points to the Republican candidates, saying, well, there's absolutely nothing about you, and that's a good thing.
This is, I mean, I'm going to...
Anonymous Google reviews, I think we need to talk about ourselves in this case.
Point of order, please. Ms. Moderator, can you allow questions and responses or statements, but not two-way conversations?
I think I stopped at Mr. Plutistic, thank you, in the back, yes.
Mary Drew, 11th Road. I would like to ask both candidates, how do you organize education meetings, save education in your lifetime? And for me, remotely, I can't tell them in person, but one of us is participating, one of us is in there, we have children, could I openly intend to try to move them sometimes on the same screen as them sitting at the front door?
I've attended the Zoom meetings that are broadcast on the town page now for the past five months. I have it directly... I'm sorry?
So you watch the videos of the recordings of the...
I watch them live as they happen.
Yes.
In your house? 25 years. It's long, but I understand. But anyway, I have a question for this guy. He said education should all be over control and decided by local people. I ask you, there's 169 towns in Connecticut. Are you saying we should have 169 different versions of history? And then if you take that across the country, should every single city in the country have its own version of history?
History is history, it's written in the books, and that's where we go. Unfortunately, you know, history sometimes doesn't get taught correctly across the board. But as far as the state itself in Connecticut, the state controls the state. That's, they have the right, we have the input put in for our children's education. If we can look at our scores and see ourselves failing in certain areas, wouldn't we want to put more effort into working to raise our math scores, raise our reading scores? Whatever we're slapping in, why not focus and hone on those skills to make them better? We want our kids to be better.
Thank you.
Now, I have a follow-up question.
Identify, you can identify yourself with the...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, my name is Abby. 27, Turnpike Road. When you say that history is history, are you aware that in Texas, they teach the Civil War in some schools as the War of In order and Aggression, and are told that it's an economic issue when we in all of this country know that it's a slavery issue? Are you saying that every single state in the country should be able to make those kinds of statements?
Things are taught differently in the deep south, as I'm sure we're all well-aware. They have their own version of things, okay? It's unfortunately things that happen. As far as a federal government outreach, I mean, how are they supposed to eliminate all of that when you can't eliminate your basic disparity against people on a daily basis?
I'd ask that you recognize that in order to stay clear of this there.
Hi, Samantha Sperry, 73, LeSean Road. I'm currently in the Board of Education, and I was on Region 19. I was actually near spot, not that long ago. I gave up my seat for Region 19 because it was, I wanted to do one well, and I was struggling to in both, so I apologize for whoever voted for me and was let down by that. But, all that to say, as somebody who is on a board, and I mentioned this in our last meeting, that I'm just an average citizen, I work a job, never been a teacher, never been in education. You have two kids in the system right now, I don't, my son's only three. As an average citizen who's not familiar with education as far as administrative education, being a teacher, things like that, how do you think, I pride myself in representing the average citizen of a town who may not know that much about what's going on. How do you think you would represent people like me, or like other people who aren't a teacher, who aren't that involved because we're just trying to get by through our dated life? How do you feel like you could represent people like me?
Can I raise your question just for a second, Andrew?
Um, I suppose I would say that for him, and then for Julie, if she wanted to participate in that, would she think that she has to offer for somebody who isn't ball-verse with terminology, acronyms, things like that, to make it so that everyone knows that it's a hard struggle to get to participate? This is a fantastic turnout, and I'm really happy about seeing everybody here. How do you make it presentable and equitable for people who may not know or who are a little bit leery about getting involved because we may not feel like we're not educated enough and we don't know or embarrassed to ask questions like this? So that's kind of a two-part thing.
Well, one of the advantages of participation, you know, is being involved in the community and getting knowledge out there, and transparency to everyone. To know what's being taught, what, you know, your child is going to be coming through the school system, what's being learned. And this isn't the town board event, this is a Region 19 that's definitely more focused on high school. Like, she's on both high schools, but, you know, it's, to me, it's definitely going to be a learning environment to go in there and see how things are going, and being the outsider, because my son will be in that school in a year. So I want to know what's directly being taught in this education. I want to make sure he's getting the best education that he possibly can be to be the best human.
Ms. Marshall? Let me know if I can add any further to the question. But in my job, in my role right now, is a lot of parent coaching and parent training. A big part of that is ensuring that the language I use and the way I use it makes sense to the families who don't have that education experience, who don't have that experience with the type of programs that they're running. It's important to me that they understand that they are their child's first and most important teacher, and that their opinion is valid. There are a lot of times in my job where I have a suggestion or strategy that just won't work in their routines, and if my children are uncomfortable telling me, "That's terrible, we're not doing it," and we come up with a new one together. So I'm really good at listening to them and talking to them in a way where I'm not using that jargon and not using those legal things, even while we're talking about sending their child to school, where all the legal stuff comes up because they try to be eligible for special education, and we're talking about what that looks like in a way that's fair and better.
Any other questions?
Amy Cole, 79, something that I haven't seen, that's my old address, sorry. 79, Common Road. I have a question for you, Julie. I'm a little concerned because when you were asked a question, you seemed a little bit dismissive, and then you said that you don't, like, look at the Google reviews, you don't really care what the Google reviews say. It concerns me as a parent, like, if I approach you with a question, then that is going to be like, "Well, I don't need to read that until I know." So I just, I was wondering how you can assure us that, like, the dedication you say you give to your patients that you're giving to their families, that you're also going to give to us, because it seemed like you were kind of saying, "I don't really care what they say." And it did seem like real reviews. I mean, most people have friends that own businesses, and they ask you to fill out those reviews. If they saw what, there's a place on Google, you could follow up. "I'm sorry, I had this experience, you had this experience, let's talk about it, let's fix it." And it just seemed a little dismissive, a little concerning.
So in my industry and in my licensing, ours is actually against our ethics code to ask for testimonials or reviews, so we do not ask anyone to ever fill any out. It's right in our 25-page-long ethics code with all of the things that we do. So that is the reason why we do not read them. I personally am the president of the company, so I haven't gone on Google to see what people think. We have plenty of families who are very happy with our services, who have their next child and their next child refer to us when they do have options of other companies.
Any other questions?
Question is for Matt Landry. Matt, earlier you said that you think that the Department of Education should be abolished, and that the funding that comes to the state through the federal government should just be done away with.
I didn't say any, but it was in my mouth.
Well, you did suggest that the Department of Education, that we don't need the Department of Education, that education should be funded at the whole.
I said it should be state, we should have the input, it shouldn't be a federal program.
What do you suppose would be the impact on taxpayers? What do you suppose would be the impact on taxpayers? If we lose $100 billion from the federal government, where is that money going to be made up from? Taxpayers in Connecticut would have to pony up that money, wouldn't they?
Well, they would, but at the same point, it's not how much money are we paying our taxes for federal funding as it is, and we don't know where that money's fully going. There could be worthless money being spent as the Department of Education is going...
Andrew, before, I ask you to keep your comments quiet.
As we try to find where the spending is going, we want to make sure it's going to the right places. So it's...
So if you have a hand up, do we want an opportunity to speak on our real face?
If he insists.
I will leave that as a reminder of the nervous parents. Just need to identify yourself with the record, I'm happy to give you the forehand.
My name is Davis Marshall, and I just want to ask, how does the new person on the board actually benefit the kids at the school?
Alright, I will let both Ms. Marshall and Ms. Landry answer that question. So the question that anyone can hear in the back was, how does the new person on the board benefit the children in school?
Okay, next up. I can say that it's all about the children and the families, and ensuring that they have an appropriate education, ensuring that they have opportunities that they can access, and ensuring that, hopefully, they all have a really positive experience in their school time at E.O. Smith. Obviously, you know, it takes a little, we can't control all the variables, but as much as we think it's a safe environment for everyone, the better.
Now, I agree with you against. Every student's environment is a safe place for them to learn and focus on their education is what we want for everyone. We want every child to be successful. We want every child to go on to do the great things, and be the best human they can be, with the greatest education that they can get.
President, 14, Bridge Middle Lane. As I said earlier, I'm standing Region 19 Board of Education member. There's a comment I need to make first about being in education and being a qualification for the board. There are currently 11 people on the Region 19 Board of Education. There's a retired science teacher. There's a former birth later, turned respiratory therapist, myself, who's an IT tech. There is also a HR director, two lawyers, a nurse, a UConn student, a UConn teacher, and an engineer. There is, and additional, I'm sorry, I forgot. There is a former Special Education Director of E.O. Smith is also on that board. There is plenty of parity on that board, it needs more, it doesn't need more of the same. Mr. Landry brings that parity to that board. That being said, I have a question for Ms. Marshall. Since we're very concerned about funding and tax pay, this is the current Region 19 Board of Education budget, which is on the table for the coming year. It's over 100 pages of grants, programs, and funding for the students in that school. It affects the tax pay a lot more significantly at the local level than anything nationally does. It's currently at $20 million, and it's run over $1 million increase, which means to the people in this room, that's a 6.5% increase in this budget to everybody here. That's the increase to your tax numbers. That is unsustainable, no matter how you slice it. These numbers usually go up by a couple hundred thousand, and now we're going up by consistently. What would you suggest be removed from this budget, be cut from this budget, for lack of a better word, in order to make these programs sustainable, but continue to give the kids the education, the programs, the clubs, the sports, and everything they need in that school?
I would have the 100-page budget to be able to answer that.
Now, that's funny, because you're asking Mr. Landry questions about federal, not asking me. You're asking Mr. Landry questions about federal funding with absolutely no knowledge of the intercity and the bills on the federal funding. You have no considerations to any possible program, any possible areas, anything that might be...
What's your brand standing?
The question is to Ms. Marshall, I'm asking you a question.
Sounds like you're brand standing.
You did quite a good job of that, now it's mine.
Mr. Christian, any other questions that asked and answered, Ms. Marshall? Anyone else? In the back. Ms. Landry, will you leave the mic? Hi, dear.
So, I've known the past couple Republican nominees for the, um, the school board have been very verbal about wanting to close down the LGBTQ center whole school. And I'm wondering if both candidates could speak to their opinion about students having access at whole school to the LGBTQ center, please?
I, I will, one more. I will note that the position is for a Region 19 Board of Education member. So I would ask that most of your questions pertain to that board and that board does not control our local school.
Okay, so in general, in general, about students having access to the LGBTQ center? Do you mind?
States have their policy in place currently, you know?
I guess so, so I have.
Well, the state has their policy in place. I can't change the state policy. I'm not running for governor or senator. I'm running for a school board position.
I'm asking your opinion about the LGBTQ.
My opinion is the, the state has their policy in place. I can't personally change that. Why, why fight at something that I can't personally change?
So I'm asking your opinion. I'm not asking your opinion of who has control over that. I'm not, I'm fighting, I'm asking your opinion of students' access to an LGBTQ center.
My opinion is the state has it mandated. I can't change that, I'm on the state.
You've answered the question.
I can answer the question. I'm not, he's paying the bills.
Ms. Marshall?
I think for any of the children who are part of that community and have somewhere that they could be heard and seen and meet with children who also have the same ideals, the same struggles, the same concerns that the other people in that community have and they have a place that is safe for them to voice those and be heard and be understood.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Jennifer Tian, 26 Eldred, Channel 10. I have a question for you. Um, and it's exactly what, um, Arthur, sorry, forgot your name. Arthur asked, um, Julie, because the question is still valid regardless of what letter is after your name. So what would you cut out of the budget?
Again, without seeing the budget? There's no way of knowing.
So you acknowledge that that's not a really good budget question.
If I'm trying to answer the question, I would like to answer the question. I don't need the mockery from behind the scenes. What's kind of sad in this town is being a newcomer. The absolute divide in this town is very sad. It really is. And not for nothing, I'm a registered independent. Okay?
So?
And the mockery continues, which is funny, but it's, it's, it's okay. Without personally reading it and going through it and actually studying it and knowing it for myself, because I'm now starting coming in. I don't need there at the moment. I don't have a child in that school. I'm not focused on that school at the moment.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? In the wake of, I'll come back to you.
Hi, Ms. Jan Ross, 17. Um, I have a daughter who recently got divorced. I'm just going to be starting there as a practice. So my question is, um, we've talked about the Department of Education. We've talked a lot about money. Let's talk about the kids, because that's what's really bad. What is one of the biggest challenges for high school states and how do we help them? That is something I'd like to know from each of the kids.
So from the outside looking in, I don't know what the expectations are at that school. That's something I'd like to, that I would personally dive right into. Talk to the other board members. What's the struggle? Where are the downholds? How can we help the kids? Because at the end of the day, it's about the kids.
Ms. Marshall?
One of the biggest struggles I've heard from friends who have older children in that school is that they're coming from secondary school and all of a sudden they're coming into this giant high school with other towns and other kids who already know each other, who already have different friend groups and different things already established. And then our children, who don't even all go to Yosmith, they go to Tech School and other schools, go there and they don't have the same community that they had here and that they're used to here. So I think it'd be important to have more opportunities for them to meet people in their field and maybe act where they allow so that we could, um, figure out ways and make friends and build those, 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 um, connections before they go into there being a little bit of a giant school.
Thank you. Thank you, the kids. Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Sarah Smith, Eldred, 69 Eldred. And if you come on board, I think, I think you'll find that people work together. Also, um, I'm kind of interested in maybe your approach. Also, tonight, I'm heartbroken to have this and a budget review, okay? I've got my link open in case you. And we've already cut the budget talking about positions of teachers or staff. And we are presenting different scenarios to reduce money to do things that are already less than what all of this has suggested. Okay? But it's, it's, I invite you to come and listen. I also am hearing you and Julie talk about what is best for kids. A lot of it, I, you know, you know, in different parties. A lot of times, I agree with him on some of these sort of things. So you have to come and act as a worker here. And this thing of making a divide between educators and people who have a candidate. You know, we're all citizens here, all people. We all work together. That being said, uh, tonight, I'm listening to the meeting on DEI. And how the federal government can DEI support. And that's an interesting conversation. So first of all, what do you think of? I'm going to be back here. By the way, we are very grateful. They have great programs and lots of support. Doesn't matter who you are, your ethnicity, your orientation, you are human beings and you are accepted. So what do you think about?
Ms. Landry, is it, is your question only to Ms. Landry or are you asking the same question to Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, I would love to.
The opportunity, and I ask that if you're the same as I did this very, because I'm like a. Your questions are very.
I appreciate that you have the justice. You're welcome. Because I have something to, I appreciate you doing. What are you, where are you on DEI and, um, do you stand out for it, for the students? Or do you have a different idea? Thank you.
Ms. Landry?
Thank you for the invite to listen in those calls, first of all. Thank you for that, that's very nice. As far as the DEI policies and procedures, the state has, again, policies in place for those type of events. I, as, who, someone's hired plenty of people in my career so far. I always look for the best candidate. And that's who I want to represent, whatever place I'm working. I want the best possible candidate. I would much rather have everyone come in to do and I find the best candidate that's on paper as the best candidate versus just kind of picking someone based on orientation, skin color. It's, it's not fair. It should be the best person that's qualified to do that position. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Ms. 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 Marshall?
I think it's important that we have diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives at all. Right now, some are being changed and closed down outside of our community. It's important that we really make sure that ones in our community are strong and consistent so that we have that place to help the children.
Thank you. Ms. Landry?
I would like to add on to Sarah's question.
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, sorry. Lord, I'm reading 52. So I'd like to add on to Sarah's question because the term DEI has been weaponized of a present administration. So I think that we need to use the actual words, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I would like each candidate to please define for us what you think each of those words mean and how they relate to education and students, and not hiring, but how do they relate in school?
Ms. Marshall?
Sure. Um, so diversity is, obviously, we can have racial diversity and like diversity, alter the price of diversity at the core, but it's also a part of what we're offering for the classrooms, what we're offering for the curriculum, what we're offering as far as the different opportunities that the children are able to access. Um, as far as equity, it's ensuring that all children are able to access that curriculum. It's not necessarily giving every single child the same thing because some will need more support than others and it's making sure that all of them are able to access what we are providing them. Um, inclusion, as a special education teacher especially, um, has a special presence in my heart because it's really important that we have those different things, people with different abilities in all of the classrooms to rest of their ability so that, not only so that the children can be able to have extra support and access the curriculum, but also so the other children in that classroom have that model of a friend that might have a little bit different mindset.
Look around at the room, our schools, our towns. We have diversity. It's, it's a program that doesn't, oh wait. We don't need to teach ideological background. We need to teach morals. How, how can we include everyone? How can we be equal to our friends and our neighbors? Including people in everything is what we should be doing to be a thing. America itself is a very diverse place. And we should be bringing people along with us, not creating more hostility or anger in between other people. So I think as far as that. Yeah, that's.
Let's move on. Um, Deanna, if it suits, to my voice, to Channel 10. I'm actually pretty much to this town for this kind of committee. To the Republican candidate, I'm independent. I have two sides. Um, my main question, as a mother of a black and brown child, as a member of the LGBTQI community, you say that it's up to the state. Yes, that you cannot change. There is no point to change or push for change something that the state controls. But for mine and my child to keep in mind, are you willing to fight to help our children feel and be included and feel as part of one community?
Her job is to feel included. But again, when it comes to the policies that the state already has in place.
Are you willing to fight to help them feel and be included?
On the high school's school board, to make sure that kids feel good in the school? Yes, 100%. As far as the broader, I can't change the state policy. And to say that also too, I am the, I'm not a Republican, just to put it.
Right, as a Republican candidate.
I'm sorry, I did it, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? We'll get to everyone, I'll come back to you to give a couple of those remarks. Yes, the law now, come to the back.
Hi, this is 55, I'm calling, I'm going to, and I'm speaking as a member of the board of finance, as an advocate. Um, speaking as a citizen. Seeing that I listen to a lot of our town meetings, um, we are facing huge deficits. It's actually a question for both of you. The state is facing huge deficits. Special education. What I'd like to know is, in this town, we have a 15% poverty level right now that is continuing to rise. How are you going to deal best for our kids? I don't have, but I see all of the kids in this town as important. How are you going to deal with budget cuts that are presented and how we fight for our children at the state level that is not fully funded our special education? And I'd like to hear from both candidates.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall?
Sure. Um, I am very active in my personal life and professional life when it comes to funding and state laws and helping with education reform in general when needed. I am more than happy to lobby if needed, write testimony when needed if the funding is continuing to be pulled or drastically pulled since we don't know what's going to happen. It's tricky, as most of us know, because when there is a special education need financially, we can't say no to that. We have to provide a lot of those. When there's a need that we have shown is actually a need that the money has to show up. So I would find a way to lobby for, hopefully, money that is not from the town or that's in the town to figure out a way to work the budgets that is never going to stay hard.
One additional question. But it was. It is.
The question's probably the moderator's.
Sorry. I sort of asked a dual question, so that's okay.
Ms. Landry?
I've been working with the town government especially too. You need to, we've got to find a solution. Costs are increasing, I guess. There's no two ways about it. We need to come to and try to find what is to fund, what we need to fund for our children. It's, without person looking at it directly, it, it's hard to speak on what, you know, what needs to be tweaked, what needs to be moved. the ways to fund what we need to fund for our children. It's, without person looking at it directly, it, it's hard to speak on what, you know, what needs to be tweaked, what needs to be moved. If there's anything that could be moved, you know, unfortunately, I don't, I haven't looked at it directly as far as when it comes to special education. But I know that the need is there and we need to make sure all of our students get the education they deserve.
I also ask both of you, how would you deal with cuts? If that's to, how would you cut the budget? If you had no choice and this town didn't accept a budget, how would you cut? Would you cut children's art?
Is there anything I can possibly add to the second part of your question?
It's very hard to say what to cut or what there, it has to be cut without talking with other board members and other people in the town. I think it would have to come to a town decision, you can't just see a one-person decision. If there's something that has to be cut, I think that you go to the public and it should be a public vote, okay? This is what's on the table and this is what we have. Unfortunately, this is where we're at. It's the public's choice. I, I personally can't say I cut one thing or another because I'm just one person. It needs to be a town-wide thing, the people that have kids in school, that's where it comes down.
Ms. Marshall, did it get that?
I would communicate with and lean on the other boards in town that deal with the finance, that deal with the other parts of our budget to ensure that, seeing the entire picture, that I would not necessarily announce board that's a member. And then hopefully as a team come together with some type of budget that would work for everybody in the town.
Thank you. Go to the bathroom, I'll be back here.
All right, Karen Ross. I was just going to make a question.
There's a motion on the ground, I heard a second, I don't know if you can hear me. A second.
Rob, seventy-seven, common road. Rob, vote.
Stick this ticket over here. All right, there's been a motion and a second to move the question. I will act that if the vote is unanimous or if anyone is in favor, we will then move to voting. If it's not, we will continue with discussion. All those in favor of moving the question signify by raising your hands. If not, all those in favor, again, to move the question, raise your hands. All right, with that, we will move to voting. Every if it's, give us a balance on that you should be voting, voting, uh, the names if you intend to vote for this position. So if you stay in your seat, we will collect your votes and then they will be counted. So I should stay in your seat and if you put your vote in the town chair, it will be recorded. And you must be in the room to vote. Each person is entitled to one vote. You may not vote, and vote if some of you, you must be in the room to vote.